Generally aren't this exciting? I'd like to ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Timniak, if you could lead us in a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could ask that we remain standing and have a moment of silence. This is the 75th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. I'd ask that everybody keep in their thoughts and prayers, the people that gave their lives on that day and the families that have sacrificed with them since. All right, thank you. Now, we have some special recognition today. One of the favorite meetings of the year. We have our -- we're going to be recognizing our 2016 Employee and Fairfield of the Year Award winners. This is the 13th year that the Selectmen have conducted this special recognition, and I want to thank everyone who sent in nominations. We're going to start with our 2016 Employee of the Year Award. And citizens and town employees of the town of Fairfield, we're encouraged to nominate an employee to be considered. The primary criteria for consideration, our service and job performance that goes beyond the daily work of the individual and that benefits the Fairfield government and community. Such basic criteria includes, but is not limited to, performs the job exceptionally well, reliability and dependability, initiative, integrity, judgment, cooperation and spirit, outstanding public service, and unique contributions to improve government services. And this year's award winner is Lieutenant Jim Perez from the Fairfield Police Department. Congratulations. He's just took a moment up there. Jim, before you go, we still have a case to put on here to make sure you're justified.
Oh, okay.
We have further evidence to present on your behalf. The -- I want to thank the three people who nominated Lieutenant Perez: Betty Gabriel from Conservation, Josephine Keough from Planning and Zoning, and Laura Pooley from Engineering. Can Captain Smith and Captain Zaven please come up to the podium and read the three nomination forms?
All right, thank you. First, congratulations, Jim, by the way.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you.
So we received three letters in support of Jim's nomination. And a couple of them are longer, so what we've done is sort of summarized the letters and read the highlights points for you. So the first one we've got is from Betty Gabriel. And some of the things she wrote in her nomination, it says, "In addition to providing 25 years of dedicated service to the Fairfield Police Department in his current position as lieutenant in the Patrol Division of the Fairfield Police Department, Lieutenant James Perez has dedicated himself to not only serving the community with his selfless efforts to keep us safe, but continues to provide a unique and valuable contribution to the town, residents, teachers, students, and employees. As you know, Lieutenant Perez has held many positions within the agency, including a task force member with the Federal Bureau of Investigation and Drug Enforcement Administration. He has taught DARE program at the elementary schools and was a member of the SWAT team for 14 years. Lieutenant Perez has also appeared in several publications and has held the position of Public Affairs Officer. Lieutenant Perez continues to conduct facility surveys and provide valuable information, as it may be unique to each location or department, to increase security throughout the town of Fairfield. A recent incident in town provided an opportunity to learn just how beneficial and valuable the practices that have been put in place are." Lieutenant Perez also continues to educate the senior community with information regarding common scams, as well as overall safety procedures. And we are very fortunate community and so very grateful to have Lieutenant James Perez in our corner. And from Laura Pooley, nominate James Perez stating, "He is reliable, dependable, has integrity, spirit, and excellent performance." She also said that he provides outstanding public service to all citizens and employees of the town of Fairfield. Laura also mentioned a recent picture of Lieutenant Perez noting his awards and multiple distinctions. And then from Joe Keough, "I am pleased to nominate Lieutenant Perez for the following reasons. Lieutenant Perez has provided 25 years of dedicated service to the Fairfield Police Department. His commitment to quality and carrying out safety and job responsibilities go above and beyond his call of duty. His positive attitude and willingness to exercise in public service is exceptional. With many positions behind him, Lieutenant Perez has been recognized for receiving the Combat Cross Award for his involvement in a police shooting, trained law enforcement officers, teaches identity theft and scam awareness topics, consults, trains the National Crime Prevention Council in Washington, DC. With much integrity, Lieutenant Perez is devoted to his outstanding public service and exceeds his involvement in keeping our workplace and community a safer place. Lieutenant Perez serves as a role model for others to come."
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments from the Board of Selectmen?
I'd like to congratulate you on becoming Fairfield Employee of the Year is quite an honor. We received several other nominations. Yours stood out above and beyond. And right now, this time of year, it's good to recognize our officers in uniform and say thank you. I think everybody should. We should do it anytime we see anybody who's willing to put themselves on the line to protect us. And as a Selectman here in Fairfield, I recognize we have 62,000 residents, we have two colleges, we have the highways. It's a complicated grid you guys cover every day. So from me, I want to say thank you. I also received, the former Selectmen asked me to read something who also voted for you. I was very happy to read the nomination letters for Lieutenant James Perez. He is highly regarded by both the public and fellow town employees. Even beyond the police department, he's dedicated 25 years to our town and is seen as a role model. I think it is even more fitting that we recognize one of our police officers during the difficult and disturbing times that we've been facing, that are facing other officers across the nation. I thank Lieutenant Perez and his fellow officers for your service." That's from former Selectman McCardle.
And if I might add on to that, I know Lieutenant Perez, you've been very helpful to me as a person. As in being new to this role, we had numerous conversations, and your advice and guidance in terms of how to communicate with the public, in terms of what we were facing and what would step, steps we were going through, was extremely helpful to me, and I want to thank you for that. I've also seen the extra effort you've taken with our seniors and in school security, where you played a major role in helping to find the security we needed at our facilities throughout the town. So I want to thank you for taking that extra effort. And I know you sat through several training sessions with town employees to talk through what we needed from a security standpoint and to help our employees know what to expect and what to do if certain events should arise. So I want to thank you again for sharing your expertise there, and I'm thrilled that you are able to join us here. I think we have a specific presentation, Jen. Do we have -- is it? All right. Chris Clonk. So we can -- now's the time at the podium. There you go.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
And let's get Chris Clonk, let's get on either side here. Let's get a shot here. Can you do this?
One more.
Now, Lieutenant Perez, as promised, now you have time for rebuttal.
Rebuttal, yeah. That's right. Listen, I really, I'm humbled by all this. I will tell you that I appreciate all the nominations and everyone here, but I got to tell you, I'd like to share that with every town employee, because if it wasn't for every town employee, we really wouldn't be functioning, and we really wouldn't be Fairfield. And I love this town, and this town has given me so much, and it's an honor for me to actually come out and take the knowledge that I have and move it forward to people, because I believe that's the best way that we can keep our community safe and our employees safe. And I know that there is more work to be done. I, there's no doubt in my mind that the best from the Fairfield Police Department is yet to come. We do have a lot of good things that hopefully we'll be able to enact in the future, and I will tell you that regardless what happens, our town will be in very good shape. And so I want you to, you know, just embrace the police officers that do a very good job. We have excellent officers in our police department. We have excellent town employees who are really dedicated, and that's what inspires me to keep going and to keep moving forward. But I will tell you this, we are in trying times and days, and you know, even with budgets and things like that, and so we have to learn to do more with less. But I will say this, that I love doing what I do, which is helping to impart knowledge, to keep people safe right in our communities, and that's what really keeps me going every single day. So thank you very much. I'd like to thank my wife, because if not, I'll have to sleep downstairs. I'd like to thank my wife for everything she's done, and thank everyone for all the support I've gotten, and I really mean this from the bottom of my heart. If anybody ever needs anything, really, from the police department or even from me as a consultant or however, please reach out, because we have a lot of work to do. But I am confident that we will get it done and that we all will be better for it. So thank you very much.
See? We've got my man. Fairfielder of the Year. Fairfielder of the Year.
I'm glad you said something.
Okay. Do you need your bag? The primary criteria for consideration are personal time, energy, and service to the residents of Fairfield and/or our community in general that makes a positive difference for our town. Criteria includes, but are not limited to, outstanding volunteer commitment that benefits an individual, group, or the entire Fairfield community; unique achievement that benefits our community or society in general; model citizen who reflects the positive values of the town of Fairfield; exceptional personal qualities, including but not limited to, leadership, initiative, reliability, dependability, integrity, cooperation, and spirit. And this year's winner is, from all, Doug Freed from the Pequot Library. Doug, if you could just stand over there for a moment while we present the case. 26 people nominated Doug.
Yes.
Pequot staff, patrons, volunteers, board of directors, and more nominated Doug. Can a couple of folks come up to the podium and help present their comments? Stephanie?
So I'm Kelly LaFerriere.
Good, thank you.
I'm on the Board of Trustees of Pequot Library, and I am the treasurer. And four years ago, somebody asked me if I would be the treasurer, and they said, "But don't worry, Doug Freed is your assistant treasurer." And I said, "Okay, fine, I'll do it." And that promise proved to be true and incredibly helpful. I could not do the job without Doug. So a few things that, attributes that I would, that I would say about Doug that is important to know. One is his passion. He is as passionate about the library as he is about the Rangers, as he is about the turkey trot, as he is about the book sale. But overall, I mean, he brings that passion to everything he does, and we all benefit. The second attribute is his humility. Everything he does, he does so quietly. He does without any fanfare. He does all types of weather, all types of hours of the day. He's incredibly dedicated and doesn't want the attention. And the other thing that I love about Doug are his ideas. He has endless flow of ideas on how to improve everything that we do at the library, not just limited to his areas. It could be any aspect, and his intelligence knows no bounds. He really is so well-informed and makes all of us better. So I'll leave you with one quick story. A couple of years ago, my fifth grade boys were helping with the winter book sale, and they were on a mission for a thesaurus and couldn't find one, and of course, I was much more interested in that than any other book that they might be looking for. So they went home a little scarged, couldn't find it, and Doug overheard it and on his own went back through all the books in the library and all the dark corners and found two thesaurus out of twin boys and left them at the library with a note, so the next time they came, there they were. So just an example of how dedicated and attentive Doug is to the needs of the library and the town overall. So thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Is that your word?
On behalf of the Pequot Library, I'm here to represent, I'm the executive director, and I really want to extend a heartfelt congratulations to Doug, and we thank all of our volunteers, numerous volunteers, help our operations all year long at the library. And also Doug's family have contributed to the success of the library over the years. His wife Lori, it's probably fair to say Andrew's grown up at the library. Doug's commitment to the library goes back at least 25 years. And he not only serves as our assistant treasurer as a member of our Board of Trustees, but is the chair of our book sale committee. Our book sale welcomes at least 20,000 people to the town of Fairfield every July, tens of thousands more each November and each February. And this is a fun community event that Doug spearheads every year, year after year, without complaint, lovingly so, with humor and flexibility and just such a warm heart and a smiling face. In addition to his full-time commitments as a professional, he stops by the library every morning on his bike before he begins his workday to help us in the operations of the book sale. And he concludes every business day stopping by the library to check in on things. Without fail, we know that we'll see Doug between the hours of 4:30 and even 6:30 every day, every weekend. He's been personally to me such a great supporter as I've newly come on board as the executive director, and I know so many of us here today could just go on and on about what a wonderful person he is, and we are so thankful to have you here at the library, and congratulations again.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the Board?
It's hard to go after that, but reading all the nominations coming in from young and old residents of Fairfield, it was overwhelming. It really was. And what came clear was your dedication to the Pequot Library. And I hear it. I've gone to the book sale every year for six-plus years now, since my son is now eight years old. We started taking him when he was two, and you see the same faces over and over again. You're one of the people who's becoming recognizable and associated with the actual book sale. So that's, it's a huge event. It's a huge undertaking, and it's a lot to ask of all the volunteers in the town who worked so hard to have that come out. So those are my comments. Congratulations. I have something from former Selectman McCardle I'd like to read. "I was very impressed with the support for Mr. Doug Freed's nomination for Fairfield of the Year. It was a pleasure reading all the wonderful comments in the nomination letters for Mr. Freed. Over and over and over, I saw words such as tireless, inspiring, dedicated, passionate about the life and the Pequot Library. It sounds like he's almost single-handedly responsible for the success of the library. I look forward to stopping by the library to congratulate and meet Mr. Freed in person, but now congratulations and thank you for your passion and dedication."
And Doug, if I might add on to that, when you look at everything that Pequot offers our community, I know we've talked about it being a treasure for our community, and I'd make the analogy that's true, Pequot is a gem. But without people like you to help polish that gem, many of us would not see all that there is to see in it. So I want to thank you for your contribution, not just to Pequot, but to our community in terms of letting us see and know everything Pequot can do and be for all of us. So thank you very much for that. And we have a special presentation.
Thank you very much. Your kind words.
Great. And then as promised, you get a chance for rebuttal too.
Yeah, and rebuttal it is. You know, I've had the, I've had a great opportunity to help coordinate the book sale for a few years, and it, what makes it special is just all the volunteers and staff that are there. I mean, I wouldn't, it's something I do of my free time, and it's hard to explain sometimes to my wife Lori, but it's something that really gives me pleasure, and it's the sense of community, there, and I almost feel like Joe Madden of the Chicago Cubs managing just an all-star, a group of all-stars here that, and even if I make blunders in managing, it doesn't really matter, because everyone is, you know, there's just a lot of people here who are so committed to the library. It's a wonderful institution. It's been around for 120 years. It's, it will be around for another 120 years, and it's fulfilled so much in the community as a, as a cultural center, as, you know, a place for people to gather, it's, and of course, to take out books. It's just a great institution, and it's been a pleasure to be involved with it. And I can't thank you enough for this recognition. It's, you know, I was listening to the tributes to the officer, and that's a real hero here. I mean, I have, I can pick and choose what I want to do. It's not like someone who's sort of facing crime every day, and so it's, it really is an easy job. All the people here make it very easy for me to, to do it, and it's something that I want to do because basically of the people that are there and the institution it serves. So thank you very much for this honor. Thank you for the opportunity to work with all of you, and thank you as well.
All right, thank you. Next up, the ever-exciting approval of minutes to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of November 16th and special meeting of November 29th. Is that okay to take those together?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve?
I will.
I will second. Any comments or edits?
No.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, you give everybody a minute.
I'm sorry. The question is, where's Tony? Because I have every other meeting.
Thank you, Doug. All right, next item on the agenda are two resignations. One from the Board of Selectmen, Lori McCardle, Republican, 267 Brookbend Road, for a term of 1115 to 1119, and her resignation date was December 1st, 2016. The other item is a resignation from the Gulf Commission, Brendan O'Hara, Republican, 60 Sleepy Hollow Road, for a term of 415 to 420. Resignation date was November 30th, 2016. Item six, to here consider and act upon the following appointment to the Board of Selectmen, Edward J. Bateson III, Republican, 2195 North Street, for a term 1115 to 1119, and this is to fill a vacancy for Lori McCardle, who just resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a, I'll second that, so that item is now before us. Any comments?
I'd like to say, I, I'm sorry Lori McCardle has resigned. She was fantastic in what she did. She served a year for the town. She served it admirably. She worked incredibly hard, so I will miss her, and I know the Board will miss her, and a lot of people in Fairfield who were relying on her will also miss her. However, Ed Bateson to fill the shoes of Lori McCardle is a fantastic selection. I look forward to working with Ed. He brings over 20 years of town experiences from serving as the chairman of the WPCA to the moderator, I mean, the majority leader on the RTM. Ed has a tremendous amount of experience. I look forward to his contributions on this board.
All right, and I would concur. Mr. Bateson's got some tremendous experience. I served with him on the RTM, and I watched him work when I was on the Board of Finance, and certainly as I've been first Selectman this town for the past five years, I've had a chance to work, talk with Mr. Bateson on a number of occasions to get his input feedback on a number of issues, and I'm looking forward to his participation and contribution here on the Board of Selectmen. Do we vote next? Do you think there's any other, anybody else? Okay?
We're good.
All right. All right. In that case, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? That sounds unanimous. Mr. Bateson, congratulations, and welcome to the Board.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all for being here. I did really have any comments to prepare, but I look forward to the opportunity, like Chris had said, I'm happy to contribute, and I really, I'm excited. So thank you very much.
Good. To make it official, I think we need a swearing in to take place, if you can, from.
I'm sorry, is you paying her to?
That's why I had to resign from the RTM.
Just checking.
There's no money in it.
Who do we got?
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a Selectman for the town of Fairfield to the best of your ability to help your God?
I do. Thank you. Your family shot? Family shot. That's why you're here. All right, Grace. Thanks, guys. I'll see you later. Here, come here. Bye. Thank you. Please join us up here, and for the short term, as part of our rookie hazing procedure, the anonymous Board of Selectmen. I'll take it. I think it takes, I just think it takes a week or so to get the name taken. All right. All right. Next up, item seven for the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen meeting dates for the calendar year 2017. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Thank you all for being here. I did really have any comments to prepare, but I look forward to the opportunity, like Chris had said, I'm happy to contribute, and I really, I'm excited. So, thank you very much.
Good. To make it official, I think we need a swearing-in to take place, if you can, from.
I'm sorry, is he paying her?
That's why I had to resign from the RTM.
Just checking.
There's no money in it.
What do we got?
Do you solemnly swear that you'll faithfully discharge according to law your duties as a selectman for the town of Fairfield to the best of your ability to help your God?
I do. Thank you. All right. Family shot? Family shot. That's why you're here. All right, Grace. Thanks, guys. I'll see you later. Here, come here. Bye. Thank you. Please join us up here, and for the short term, as part of our rookie hazing procedure, the anonymous Board of Selectmen.
I'll take it.
I think it takes, I just think it takes a week or so to get the name taken.
I'm good.
All right. All right, next up, item seven, for the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen meeting dates for the calendar year 2017. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Chris, second by Mr. Bateson. Any comments or changes? I think there were a couple thoughts on those, if you would.
There was. I wasn't too crazy about the 5th of July.
Okay.
And I had asked if you were available maybe the week after, so I'd like to make a motion to change the 5th to the 12th, I guess, add seven.
Chris, does that work with you?
That works with me.
Okay. That's good. Anything else?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bateson, why don't you continue?
The Board of Selectmen, the public executive sessions on March 27th and 28th.
Excuse me, I don't think we're on those yet.
Separate, is that a separate item?
I think so.
Okay. I'm good, then.
Okay. Chris?
I would tentatively like to reschedule, I guess, I don't believe I'll be in town for the March 15th meeting. I know it's a bizarre, random month, but I don't believe I'll be here for that, so.
Might I say, because that's March, what I'm going to suggest is we keep it where it is and change it then based on the budget meetings, your calendar, and every, because there's going to be a series of dates there, because we're going to two budget meetings a week then, so I'm going to suggest that we'll know more in March to move that to a date that's available for all three of us, or potentially, based on timing, cancel it if we don't have enough business.
I'm fine with that as well.
Because I think it's just going to be problematic if we try and pick a date now because of everything else going on.
Okay.
All right, but if you'll make, just note of that, so when we get to March 1st or February, the end of February, that we take that up and reschedule that to a convenient date, if that's, if that sounds like an okay approach.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
All right. All right. So, then, with one change, from July 5th to July 12th, the item as, let's have a, let's amend this. So, Mr. Bateson, you made the motion.
Yes.
Chris, will you second that?
I'll second.
All voting on the amendment?
Aye.
All in favor, aye. All right, so that's, the item as amended is before us. All in favor of the amended schedule?
Aye.
All right. Well, let's have a motion, sorry.
Motion to approve the amended.
Yes, a second?
I'll second it.
All right, now, who in favor of the amended schedule?
Aye.
Aye. Chris?
Yes, aye.
All right, unanimous. So, that's done. Item eight, these are the budget meetings for calendar 2017. Now, and these are the combined joint ones, and then the Board of Selectmen public hearing dates. I'm going to suggest that we do not vote on the joint meetings. The Board of Finance had some last-minute changes. I didn't get a chance to review those, whether those matched up these, but you all also haven't had a chance to review those, so I'm going to suggest we get the Board of Finance combined dates out to our board and take this up at our next meeting.
So, you want a motion to table 8A?
Yes, postpone to a date certain. Yes, please.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, that item will take up at January, first meeting in January.
There's no, no meeting in December? We're done?
Okay, do you want, do your motion was postponed? Do you want to take it up in December?
Oh, oh, no.
The Board of Finance is voting on, the Board of Finance is going to give us their dates.
So, they don't have a meeting?
They don't have a meeting until January.
Got you. I'm good with January.
I told the chairman that we would review those dates and get any conflicts back to him, so if you'd get those to me so I can get those to Mr. Flynn, that would be great.
No, I'm good with January.
And then, we'll confirm those dates at our meeting. All right? And again, I'm not sure there are any conflicts. I just want to make sure that, that we all have a chance to look at the latest version of the dates, which since some changed last night, we have not had a chance to do that.
Good.
All right, and then, with respect to the public meeting, item B on this, may I have a motion to put that before us for discussion?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Okay, that item's before us. Mr. Bateson, did you have some changes?
Yeah, that was the one. Two o'clock's kind of tough for me. I'd like to see if we could push that back later in the day. I don't know how you guys feel. I mean, I had suggested, just an hour would help me to go to 3 o'clock, but I think somebody else had mentioned maybe 5.
I think there are two, the issue here with these has generally been assistance from the Board of Finance. On the Monday date, if we're making a number of changes or discussion or ask for additional documentation with the Board of Finance, they need time to provide that for us by Tuesday. So, pushing it back to 3 o'clock shouldn't be a problem. Pushing it back to 5:00, because then they're not getting it until whenever we're done, which might be considerably late in the evening.
I'm not going to lie, an hour would help me.
Okay, so, moving that, so that we've got an amendment to that to 3 o'clock, and then on Tuesday, I think if I remember the schedule correctly, pushing that back to 3 o'clock shouldn't be a problem, because we have an extra day before it has to go to the Board of Finance. Historically, that's been an issue in terms of preparation of our changes, so it can get out to the Board of Finance. I believe you've got an extra day there, so that doesn't impact us as much. So, your suggestion, Mr. Bateson, is we amend this to, so both start at 3 o'clock, is that okay?
Fine.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Also, all in favor of the amendment, amendment only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, the item as amended is before us. All in favor of the amended item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let's have a motion for the amended.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good, we're there. We're there. Thank you for that. All right, next item up, Mr. Bateson, I should point out, there were a number of other items that potentially could come up at this meeting. We postponed a lot of those to December 21st to give you time to come up the board and get acclimated and appoint those, specifically, a number of appointments, so if, you could follow up with my office, we'll make sure we get those potential appointments to you so you can contact those people and get your input on those.
Okay, thank you.
However, this one seemed pretty straightforward, and we kept it on the agenda. This is item number nine, from the Conservation Commission, to approve a donation of $1,500 from the H. Smith Richardson Conservation Fund Trust to the Southwest Conservation District as recommended by the Conservation Commission. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
The item is now before us. Mr. Carey, could you come up and fill us in on why we want to do this?
Hello, Board of Selectmen, Brian Carey, Conservation Director, Town of Fairfield. This is something that the Commission has done year after year. Actually, the Southwestern Conservation District has had their funding cut over the years, but they provide valuable service, not just to the town, but the town's residents and agricultural community, in basically, technical assistance through agricultural, it's all free. They provide agricultural, technical assistance to the agricultural community, but for the town in particular, they can serve as expert witness on land use, land use applications. We don't, we don't use their services regularly, but they, but if it does come up, or we do have some type of large-scale application where we would actually need a third-party, independent consultant to kind of weigh both sides of it, we can call them, and it's a free service that they would come in, and they would basically act as, they develop what's called a King's Mark Report, which is a, you know, a non-bias environmental assessment that's performed, and we can use that as a, as a tool, you know, for or against a land use application.
All right. I've got a couple questions. Anybody want to go first?
Go ahead.
All right. One, are you proposing we do this from the Smith Richardson Conservation Fund Trust every year, since this is an annual request?
Yeah, that's, that's how they've funded in the past. They've skipped a couple years, but generally, they've actually taken the funds out of the Smith Richardson Trust Fund rather than put it into the normal operating budget. Going back several years, they've been doing it the same way, even before I started in May 2015.
Interesting, because I don't remember this coming before the Board of Selectmen in the past, and I know to access this fund, it's supposed to come before the Board of Selectmen.
It is, and I'll have to go back and look, but it might have been a year or two that they haven't done this, but in the past, it's taken, the donation has been made out of that account.
Okay. And this group, the Southwest Conservation District, what is their source of funding? They don't survive on $1,500. How many towns contribute to them, and what, where do they get their money from?
So, it, they have a set aside state budget, but that's actually been cut, and then they also get money from the Natural Resource Conservation Service. It's like, basically, a subset of the USDA. So, they, they really do, they're, they're mostly resolved, revolved around soil science. So, if someone had, you know, they're charged with soil science, whether it be inland wetlands soils or agricultural soils. If you were to call them, and, you know, you wanted to locate, you know, the best agricultural soils on your property, or you have, you know, horse farming, they have manure management specialists, they come out and actually look at how they're managing, you know, certain best management practices on their land. So, they're, they're funded mostly by donations, they do get federal grants, and then the state, there's, there is a set aside through the state funding that's separate from the DEP.
Do we know how many municipalities they service?
There's four conservation districts in the state. I don't know the exact breakdown. I could get you that number if you give me a minute, but it's, it's sizable.
Where I was trying to get to is, is, does every municipality give them $1,500?
Yeah.
How or why is $1,500 the right number for Fairfield?
They've broken that down, and again, if you look at the breakdown of who pays them, it's some years people give a donation, some years they don't. They generally ask for a donation from both the Inland Wetland Commission and Conservation Commissions in the town. Fairfield, since we have combined Conservation Inland Wetland Commission, we've generally given $1,500. I don't, and I have to look, I don't believe we did this last year, but they did, they did do it the year before. So, it, it is a good service. As their budget has dwindled from the state, their state allocations, they have kind of stepped up their recruitment to the town because they do need that funding, and the idea was to pay for it out of the fund, since there's no impact to the local operating budget.
Have they ever come before this board and made a presentation on what they do and how they create value for the town?
Not in front of.
I mean, not that you haven't done a good job of trying to lay that out, but.
Yeah, and I could ask them to do that. I do work with them regularly, not so much on direct impact Fairfield stuff, but more collaborative things throughout the region, whether it be the Conservation Technical Advisor Committee that's set up through the MetroCog, or they do send someone to most of our Saskatoon Brook Watershed Management Committee meetings to basically provide background information. They're kind of, you know, for this part of the state, this, this, they, they kind of have an overview of most of the soil science-based, science to, to help us, you know, get through the regulations.
Any comments or questions?
Yes. Mike, thanks for bringing that up. I'm with you, I don't recall this, so I would like to, maybe, like you were saying, put a face to the organization that we're supporting and have them come in, because you're right, I don't, I don't recall this. So, I would go for that. And the only, the only question I have is, I'm assuming that this donation, there's got to be restrictions on this trust fund. I'm assuming that this satisfies all those restrictions.
That's right. So, yeah, so, I mean, they, they have done donations out of that in the past, and since this isn't a lot, and it's not eating into the principle of the, of the fund, it only requires Conservation Commission approval and Select, Board of Selectmen's approval.
Yeah, and just to clarify, if it was going to use enough of the fund to, in fact, take principal away from the fund, it would also require the Board of Finance approval.
That's correct.
But because it's just using, in essence, the interest that's been generated over time, it's only a Board of Selectmen decision along with the Conservation Commission.
So, just, just one more, they, they actually fund the environmental review team, which we haven't used them in a while, so each, each conservation district has, they provide, as I said, technical expertise on, on, on land use applications if needed, but they will actually come down and study a problem for the town and for environmental, for environmental problems. If we wanted to study the salt marsh, we could actually study the salt marsh and climate change effect or something to, you know, a small degree. We could actually have them come down there, and they would provide an independent sourced review and, and put together a scientific report that we could then, you know, in turn, turn around and use it for either planning or grant applications for, you know, again, if there was some type of land use application, we could use that to, you know, either build up our side or defend our side. And we do, I mean, I do, dating back from the early 80s, we do have several of those reports that have been generated through that process, and they've, you know, in Fairfield, but even when I was in Stratford, the one for Long Beach West, which comes up, that's, that's been like a benchmark of, that's helped tremendously on setting a tone for the planning process going forward 25 years.
Okay. Mr. Timmy?
Is there a time limit for, like, was there a bill they sent us?
Yeah, so, they come, I believe it came in September, they, you know, they, they want it for, you know, it's a fiscal year, so, you know, we acted on it, it's pretty much as soon as we got it.
This passed the Conservation Committee unanimously?
Yes.
Any discussions or any issues?
Not really. It's something they've done pretty much every year. I'm not going to say every year, because there's been some gaps, but pretty much every year. I think the intent is that they know, when they made their request this year, I know that, since this is funded, I believe, out of either the Office of Policy and Management, I think they cut that. It's, it's one of the things that was first to be cut dramatically, and they, they have a very small operating budget from the state, too. I think it's $250,000. There's a team of four people who work there.
Would they be willing to come in sometime in the springtime after budget season, give us an update on all that done?
I'm sure they would.
The.
And if you want further information, I mean, you don't need to vote on this tonight if you don't feel, you know, if you want, I can provide you more of a background on this if you need it.
Speaking personally, on one hand, it's $1,500. On the other hand, this is certainly a challenging year. I'm just, what I've done with other groups like this that provide a service, so it's not looked at as just a donation, this is not a donation to some cause or something else, where you're describing services we get back.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's reasonable that this board know what services those are, so a presentation from them back, and perhaps sooner than, late spring certainly isn't bad, but I'm thinking if they want the money sooner, perhaps they can come in January and give this to us, since it, so that's one. Second, I'd like to know kind of where their funding comes from.
Mm-hmm.
Like, and a report from them saying, and specifically, how many municipalities they serve?
Mm-hmm.
And what they get from each municipality.
Not a problem.
And then, if you could find a little bit of history, just so we're clear on when we've given it in the past, and when we haven't, not that that constrains us to do something or not this year, but I think it'd be helpful, because it's, I just don't remember, I remember this item coming up, I don't remember coming out of this trust fund, and I don't remember coming for the Board of Selectmen. I think somehow it was paid out of the budget in the past.
Yeah, and, you know.
So, it wouldn't come before.
That's right.
Any of us, so, we could just be clear on the history.
Yeah, and they're set up kind of like the regional planning agencies, so I can't, I mean, but they're much larger, so I can't rattle off in my head exactly which towns right now.
Not asking you.
Yeah, but I can get that.
And didn't expect you to know.
I can get that information.
They should be able to provide that, because part of me, part of where I'm trying to get to is what makes $1,500 the right number?
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
All right, because at some point down the road, they may want more, and in order for us to evaluate that, the question is, how do they get to this number?
Right.
And, and I want to hear that that's just what they've always asked, unless, maybe that's what they've done.
Part of me wants to approve the $1,500, just because I'm sure they're going to be sweating out, looking at the governor's budget this January, and perhaps they come back and they ask us for 45, when they see the actual governor's budget.
They do send a list of who's paid and what, it's like a donation list.
Yeah, I just don't know who these folks are.
I agree.
I mean, not that I don't trust Brian, I don't mean it that way, but I just don't know who they are. It's not, when the Greater Bridgeport Regional Transportation Group comes before us, we know who they are, we see their buses, that type of thing, so I just, I just would like to know.
Not a problem.
From that. If they can come back in January, perhaps we can do it in January before they've read the governor's budget, even though it's been produced or something.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just have to confirm with them. I know they, I don't think that's an issue.
At, dearly, I mean, January, February, it's not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to talk to them, but I will, I will, I'm sure they wouldn't mind coming here.
We could certainly sort that out, unless, Mr. Bateson, any further thoughts you have?
No, I'm good.
All right. Then, I'm, what I'm hearing is, is it okay to, we either postpone it or take no action and just let it come back when Brian's ready?
Yeah, I don't want to talk to them, but I will, I'm sure they wouldn't mind coming here.
We could certainly sort that out, unless, Mr. Bates, any further thoughts you have?
No, I'm good.
All right. Then I'm, what I'm hearing is, is okay to, we either postpone it or take no action and just let it come back when Brian's ready. If you're not sure when they're going to do it, I'd suggest we just take no action.
I'd go with that.
All right, then we can, we can bring it back anytime.
It's fine.
Is that okay with you, Brian?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll try to get him in here for as soon as possible, the next meeting is December-
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
January fifth, and something like, so, yeah, happy to bring him back whenever it's convenient for them, and happy to address this, but just so we have a complete picture.
I can probably provide you with most of what you're looking for as far as, you know, the breakdown costs, budget, all that stuff, because that's easily accessible to me, but I will get them in front of you to ask-
And I don't mean to put you on the spot for that.
You're not at all.
Part of putting, trying to put them on the spot a little bit in terms of justifying what the request is about and why.
Yep.
I understand. All right, so, and any history you can give in terms of what they've actually done for us, you laid out a number of things-
I have boxes of reports.
That say, hey, they can do all this.
No boxes.
We don't want you to read the reports, but just if you can list a few of the things they've done for help that, all right?
Thank you.
So, if we take no action, then we're going to move on to the next item?
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Next up, item ten, from the Director of Public Works, and this requires Board of Finance and RTM approval, and this was postponed from our November sixteenth meeting. To hear, consider, and act upon the following. It'd be nice if there was a motion to waive the reading.
Oh, sorry, make a motion to waive the reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Mr. Hurley, since we waived the reading, would you summarize what this is about for us, and then tell us what is going on here?
Sure. This would be a resolution for additional funding and to accept additional grant funding for the Kings Highway Pedestrian Improvements Project. The project right now is going into final design phase, which should be completed in the end of January or February of next year, 2017. If you read the resolution, but anyway, there's two, the sixth paragraph and the eighth paragraph specifically list an amount to expend up to an additional one-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of LOT-SIP grant money, which would be a hundred percent reimbursable, and in the eighth paragraph, an additional five-hundred-and-fifty-eight, of which eighty percent is reimbursed under the TAP grant program. Well, we have gotten authorization and some recent correspondence confirming the DOT's commitment to the project and additional funding on top of those numbers. And so, it would include sidewalk extensions, right-of-way phase, and drainage improvements, and the DOT, I think that was in the packet of a November seventh letter, did they put that in there or no?
No, we didn't get that put back in.
Oh, okay. There was a letter there confirming DOT's commitment, and then they also have a, I received an email earlier today, of all, perfect timing, of federal authorization for the right-of-way phase, in which, again, they say the expenditures are reimbursable. Going back, though, to the November seventh sixteen letter, it says, please be advised that the department will be issuing a separate commitment letter for the portion that's funded under the LOT-SIP, and then they typically, on their projects, they give us a, what they call PAL, Project Authorization Letter, and those would be exact amounts, more detailed amounts. Because of the project timeline, I thought we needed to get the resolution before December thirty-first of this year, and with an opportunity, and this is why I'm going to propose that we, I'm trying to think of the words here, I want to say, I want to say post, but just delay the vote until we get more detailed numbers, because right now, it appears that the DOT has given us a range of eight-hundred thousand to one million, but because it does involve some town matching funds, I think it would be in the best interest of everybody to get the exact amount and then go through our town process, which sometimes takes six weeks. The DOT said that that would be acceptable, and so therefore, I think we should delay this until we get the project authorization letter of a detailed amount, you know, the, you know, I'll say exact or very, as close to exact amount that we can get.
All right, that request makes sense, and Bill, I could ask one other thing.
Mm-hmm.
In looking at this, and looking at the fact that we've got one-point-two approved, another eight-hundred thousand, there's a lot of numbers on here, and different reimbursement rates.
Right.
I'm going to ask, you work with Kathleen Griffin in my office, so we can get together a spreadsheet that breaks out, so this board is clear on exactly what we're approving, what the total dollars are, what the total commitment is in funds, what the reimbursement or matching part is from the town, so we can see that all laid out very clearly, because it, it's hard to follow, as much as this may be correct, it's hard to follow in this.
Well, the good news is, we have that already for what would have been this resolution, but since we have additional, you know, why get the approval here and then come back a month later for additional money? We figure we would finalize it all in one package.
I think that would be helpful for this board also, very much.
Right, yes.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I don't have any, I know this is your third time on the agenda, second time presenting.
But the good news is, at least-
We're getting closer, so next time-
Plus, the funding's going up at least, so, yeah.
Right, we're postponing and we're actually saving money, I guess, as they keep raising their commitment, so, thanks for the outline of the project, and I look forward to approving this when we get that numbers hammered out.
Sure.
Mr. Bates, any comments or thoughts on here?
No, same, I just assume, wait for better information.
All right, and I'm going to suggest same thing, that we take no action on this, so we can bring it back whenever we need to, as, Mr. Hurley, you're not quite clear whether that's going to be in two weeks or a month?
Yeah, if I had to take a quick guess, I'd say in February, but we don't know, so what I would do is, once they give us that number, I'd put it on, I'd seek to put it on in January and use both.
Very important, though, I'd like to see, in that format, you said the Kings Highway Pedestrian, what we received, where it's going, so forth.
Oh, definitely, that would be our backup.
With the additional backup.
Yes, right.
Sheila, as we talked, kind of two things, when we take no action on these, if you could make sure they're, an action item for Kathleen is to get it back on our agendas, and then second, with that request for the additional backup, we could make sure that's an action item, so we can get that done. Thank you. Mr. Hurley, any parting comments?
Nope, I'll be back.
All right, thank you, keep the numbers going up, though.
Yes, thanks.
Keep the numbers going up. All right, next up, to hear a report, an update from the Holland Hill Building Committee, and for purposes of this board, and just to cover our ground rules, generally, when we go through updates, it is our custom that the report is done to the board, that questions are asked from the board, but we do not take public comments and questions at this point. So, for those of the ground rules, Mr. Quinn, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Quinn, I'm the chairman, Holland Hill Building Committee, recently fired from the Riverfield Building Committee as of last night, okay?
It wasn't a fire, anything.
As we set up here, I bring you what I call sticker shock, okay? This estimate that came through, came through for Holland Hill at twenty-point-eight million dollars for the renovation.
If I could just ask a quick question on that, just for clarity for the board?
Sure.
Does that include the million dollars that was previously approved?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's the all-in cost?
That's all in.
Thank you.
That is the portable cost, yes. Okay. Yeah, that includes all the costs, soft costs, project costs, and construction costs, okay? And what we're doing now, and what our role is on the committee, is taking a hard look at every piece of that estimate. And so, we all know where the asset comes from, okay? There are two estimates that are derived. One comes from the construction manager, he hires a cost expert to go through and estimate cost, and one comes from the architects firm, who also hires a cost estimator. We then sit with the owner's rep and the two estimates, and come out to one estimate, and that's how we get to the number. So, it has nothing to do with anybody on the committee, okay, strictly outside vendors putting together the cost. Our role now, as we look at this, is to say, where are we, okay, and if we get input from you folks, as we do from other everybody else, what their feelings are on this particular project, okay? We believe this is extremely important. This school was built in nineteen fifty-four, okay, so, you're smiling, Mike.
It was new when I went there.
I suspect, I suspect it was brand new, but, uh-
Nice shot.
You're not looking for any favors from this board, are you?
I'd never look for favors, sir. I look for honesty. But, no, nineteen fifty-four, nineteen seventy-two, they put in the gem, and did this mother work, including windows, but basically, this is building, and the infrastructure has been untouched for fifty-plus years. And so, it's not too dissimilar than what we had at Riverfield. In fact, when I first walked through Holland Hill, it was a bit of deja vu, because it had basically same number of students, around four-hundred, plus or minus, okay, and it had the same layout, same courses, okay, that we had in Riverfield. So, to that extent, it was familiar territory. There are some key differences, okay? This particular school in the Holland Hill has a different demographic makeup, has different students, they have different needs, and our role in this committee is to meet those needs. We have met with the principal, we've met with teachers, met with parents, okay, to determine the needs, and that's what we put into that school. So, we all understand, this committee, like every other committee I've been on, we do not put in golden arches, okay? None of these architects will be on the Architectural Journal, okay? We have built a solid school, we're immersed in the plan for this one. Okay, let me, what do you guys, a site plan up?
Yes.
Take them through briefly.
If you could just introduce yourself first, please.
Brian Stone, from Kenneth Borison Architects. Over here in this kind of yellow-orange color, this is the existing Holland Hill School. You can see how Meadowcroft Road passes through towards the north end of the site. So, in this blue color here, that's where our additions are proposed. Now, the main piece of the work is this classroom addition over here, which will go where we have an existing three portable classrooms now. Part of the net result of the project will be the complete elimination of the five portable classrooms on-site now. There's also, I'm sorry, there's also another addition going on near the kitchen area, which will house the kitchen, as well as some new services, like the water service for the new fire sprinklers, upgrade electrical service, and other kind of utility items of that nature. Over on the site here, we've shown a reconfiguration of the current bus drop-off, parent drop-off, and parking lot to address one of the key concerns of the current facility, in that there isn't a great deal of parking, it can get, the traffic gets very backed up during the peak arrival and departure times due to kind of the one-lane access. So, we have a bus drop-off where buses can pass each other, similar to a parent drop-off, and improved safety going across there for any pedestrians. We've also done, also included site work that would improve the drainage infrastructure to help address, you know, concerns we've seen with other projects in the town, and adjust the grading coordinate as well, including some extra playground work there as we reconfigure the site to make the addition work and provide the security access drive going around the building.
What about the water?
Yes, the water, of course, we have to, we are staying out of the wetland areas there, here are our identified wetlands at these two areas of site and down here. We have the drainage structures, as we mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, for stormwater management and improvement for discharging from the sites, so there's actually less discharge at the end of this than there is now, even though we're adding pervious surface.
Okay. Just so you know, there's twelve-and-a-half acres, okay, associated with Holland Hill, it's actually twelve-point-four, okay, and we have now five portables on this property, and so there's a major need, okay, to get rid of the portables, as we had to do it, okay, at Riverfield, so, go ahead.
Okay, so here you can see, this is the floor plan for the school, just to orient you, this is roughly one-hundred-and-eighty degrees rotated from the site plan you just saw. So, the existing building, the existing areas that aren't really being significantly touched, I'll say, as far as replanning, are these areas that remain white. This sort of lightish-yellow-green color, that's what we're calling heavy renovated areas, things like new classrooms being created within the existing shell, new toilet rooms, the expanded administrative and health suites, the elimination of the existing stage, the renovation of a portion of the kitchen area. These more kind of minty-green colored spaces, those are what we call the moderate renovation areas, as far as the media center, the all-purpose room, the gymnasium, and then the blues are where we get into our new areas. So, here we have the new kitchen addition, here we have the new classroom addition and our new courtyard. And throughout the space, we have, you know, spread out in keeping with, you know, what we've been charged, adding more general classrooms, adding more special education and resource spaces, adding more support spaces like the admin, taking steps to address a more secure design, taking steps to address some of the special health needs that have been communicated to us. But all in all, it's a facility that we feel is in keeping with the program that's needed, but not getting, you know, excessive in size or style.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the key thing that we wanted to communicate is, we understand the magnitude of the dollars involved, okay? We certainly were a little bit sticker shocked ourselves, and we got that number back, but there is nothing that is upfront and clear and present that you can say, well, you can take that three million dollars and get rid of it, okay? It isn't that simple. We have to go back in and make sure that we've done the best job possible with every square foot that we're building, and all renovating. But it is very consistent to the specs, it's air-conditioned throughout, it's got a new fresh air system, okay? It's got everything that you would want in a modern school. And, so, you know, we know where the dollars are, we know what the town situation is, okay, and we have a lot of work yet cut out in front of us to attempt to get to a place where it is an idea that can be voted on. Gladly, ask any questions.
Do you know the, what the current state reimbursement rate is?
Sal, you could answer that better than anybody.
Twenty-five-point-three-six percent is our reimbursement rate this year. Can they change by the time the project's finally filed?
Oh, to clarify that, though, previously, the rate was twenty-seven percent, and the effective rate that we actually got was closer to twenty percent.
Correct.
So, if the new rate is lower than twenty-seven, then the effective rate may be lower than twenty. We, in essence, a number of the things that were put into our schools are not, are classified as not eligible for reimbursement, when you net it all out, we lose four or five points. Mr. Bates, I think you've seen that on school projects in your tenure also.
All too frequently.
Sal, have you run through to check to see what's in the plan, which is reimbursable versus what is?
At the time we're filing with the state, we would go through what's called the ineligible cost worksheet with both the architect, the CM, and the owner's rep to divvy out the different parts of eligible and ineligible.
So, we won't have that number prior to approval?
We're not at a level of estimate to do that right now.
You would think-
Yeah, how could we know?
-that it would be black and white. When we went through, going back a few years, when we were looking at, I was on the RTM with Mr. Bates, and there was a school reimbursement committee we looked at, as we got involved in it, it turned out that a lot more of those reimbursement items are subject to negotiation than you would think. I'm not quite sure why that is, it just seemed that that was the case.
I find it, I mean, we've done many of these, we don't, you, our Board of Ed can't put together a good guess of what-
I don't think it falls on the Board of Ed locally. It really falls on the state, Chris, okay? The state has really come around with a new objective, and that is to cut back on that amount of state funding going back to towns and cities, and, you know, that impacts the reimbursement.
And I think from a planning number, we have, I would suggest that if we were looking at this, we look at the historical actual number, not the theoretical reimbursement percentage, that we look at something closer to twenty percent, not the-
Twenty-five-point-three-six.
Yeah, something closer to twenty percent than the twenty-five, we're not getting the twenty-five percent.
Right, no, and I agree with that, and I just, for planning purposes, I would like, I guess, best guess from the BOE, the guys who've been doing this, about what you're seeing and what other towns are actually getting, would be great for planning purposes, if we could.
Anything further?
No, no.
Mr. Bates, any thoughts, questions?
Yeah, the purpose of this exercise is-
Yeah, the purpose of this exercise this evening is to do what?
What we needed, and think back to perhaps other projects, and I'm going to pick on Ludlow Building Committee, and not the committee, but just the process that was used there. By the time updates came back to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, RTM, it was already past the design stage, had gone out to bid, and there really wasn't much that could be changed at that point. And the boards loudly suggested they'd like more updates sooner, so this is with the Building Committee, and thank you, Mr. Quinn. As soon as they had a conceptual number, they haven't gone out to bid, these numbers are not guaranteed, and certainly based on the construction world, maybe lower or higher when bids come back. But getting it to us now, we have a chance to give them some input, and we get a chance to understand, so they're no surprises down the road in terms of what we're seeing. So I've asked the Building Committee to go to, come before the Board of Selectmen, as would be expected, but also to coordinate with the Board of Finance and possibly the RTM, if the RTM would like, to get an update in terms of where we are.
So no, Mr. Quinn, no specs have been changed?
No.
No ed specs have been changed, correct?
No.
Okay, because I know when we went through Riverfield, things were, we didn't get the computer lab or a science room, so I imagine nothing has been taken off the table yet?
Not yet.
Okay, when we did Riverfield, when did those things come off the table, such as the lab? Was that when you were already into the project?
That was when we were into the project.
Okay, so you made those decisions to-
In conjunction with the Education Department.
Okay.
Not solely through the committee.
So is that what they're asking us, if we're willing to forego?
This, at the moment, they're giving us an update. The questions are all on our end to understand what's taking place. I mean, the, from a magnitude standpoint, as Mr. Quinn mentioned, Riverfield, to meet the ed specs for Riverfield, the original budget was $14 million. To meet the ed specs, theoretically, the same ed specs for Holland Hill, the projection is $21 million, so that's a 50% increase. It's reasonable that we get some background as to what is driving that increase.
If I want to try and analyze these numbers on my own, do we have an estimate of what we can expect? What's the inflation factor on construction costs?
We use 4%.
4% per year? So if I looked at what we approved Riverfield a couple of years ago, if I go 4%, 4%?
Yeah, about 2014.
Right.
And this will be out to bid sometime in 2018.
And if I might, could you provide us some documentation on why that's 4%? That seems high.
Peter Manning.
Who's that?
Who is the construction manager.
He's our construction manager at Holland Hill?
Yep.
I'm literally asking for documentation. I know Mr. Manning, and I appreciate his opinion, but I'd like to see what-
We can do that.
Yeah.
We can do that.
The, and Mr. Bateson, if I might, build on some of the things you were raising. One of the questions would be, kind of, because theoretically, we've got the same ed spec for all our elementary schools.
Yeah, in theory.
Plus or minus?
Yeah.
What would be helpful to see, because one of the things that I'm having my trouble getting my head around is the 50% increase. So what I'm looking at is, it would be great to see the ed spec, what that cost at Riverfield by section or function, be it renovation, be it the number of classrooms, be it the office space, so it's some sort of kind of macro look at that, so it would be helpful. Site work is another breakout. And then also, then, what that means at Holland Hill. So we can kind of see in each area, kind of what, what I'm trying to get to is, what are the drivers? Where are we going?
We're in the process of doing that.
Okay, so that's, I think that would be helpful. And you're not asking us for approval today?
No.
This is just an updated report.
We didn't get these costs until November 28th or something of that nature, so.
So in part to address Mr. Bateson's point, what are we looking for? We're giving them some feedback in terms of what type of questions we have, so they can provide us further information. And so that's kind of from my standpoint, one of the things I'm looking, and I'm, and we could probably use a copy of the ed spec and see how that is broken out functionally, so we can see what is taking. I know we had one originally, and, but-
I'm sorry. When you say functionally, you want the ed spec compared to that?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean by functionally?
Yeah, and Riverfield, same thing, because there's, I'm looking for-
So we want to do it side by side?
Yep, exactly, like a spreadsheet kind of going across.
I'm on that.
So, Ed, here's the deal. One section might be renovation of existing space. At Riverfield, it costs $3 million, at Holland Hill, it's $5 million. What's the driver on that? Site work. It's $1 million here, it's $2 million, it's kind of weird, how do we get 50% more cost to meet the ed spec at what should be a comparable space? You know, the overall concern, and where we have to work, look at this with the community, is that if this does cost $21 million, it's not just an impact on Holland Hill, it pushes off the Mill Hill project, it pushes off the Sherman project, it pushes off a lot of other projects on this, because the town has X amount of money we can spend each year on debt service and financing these. Now, that's not your issue, Mr. Quinn, I don't mean to make that multiple problem, but it's something that we have to look at.
I try to be conscious of it, yes.
Yep. It's, so it's not just one project, one school, as we do this. The, now, you mentioned that, so things like, if I look at functional areas, you know, like special ed, you know, that's certainly an area that's gotten a lot of focus and conversation. The ed spec must say something about that, and it would be good to see what the Riverfield special ed component was versus what the Holland Hill special ed component is.
To the degree we have the specificity, we will.
All right. Renovation of existing space, as I mentioned, site improvements, cost of Riverfield, boom, projects there. When I look at, this does account for the 1.2, which is good, because I know we'd already approved that, and that was that initial package, so the $21 million's the all-in cost. And that was one of my questions coming in here.
And this is a 504 design.
Right, which Riverfield was also, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I think those are the framework for most of my discussions. If I had to phrase it in one question, it's how do we go from $14 million to $21 million? And, you know, sitting on, again, not your question, but as I sit here, does that mean Mill Hill's going to be $30 million? It's, those numbers get very big very fast if we're looking at this.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in, I really, I think one of our first exercises, the waterfall, when we, we should immediately drop this number in, and we should, we, I think, Mill Hill, we got in there for like $9 million, maybe?
Yeah, this was on the waterfall for 13, which is-
Yeah, I think, I think right away, I mean, just based upon what we're looking at here, we got, I mean, right now, put Mill Hill at 20 on the waterfall.
Well, I think that-
And just face reality that these, this is just the way it is. I'm not, just so we know, because I could, being formally on the RTM, when I looked at making these decisions and approving things, I would look to the future and say, okay, here I am, I got $13 million for Holland Hill, and then I got $9 million for Mill Hill, and that affects my decision in the current. So this decision is now being affected by the fact that I'm not looking at Mill Hill at $9 million, I'm looking at Mill Hill at $20 million. So that's affecting this project now. So I really think we should just throw that number in there, and throw it in the mix, and not embrace it, just realize it.
That's, that's the challenge, because it's not an approved number, and it hasn't even gone out to bid yet, so that's one. The second piece, I think, with that is that we need to move out the other projects, so we know what the timing is on everything.
When you say move out into the future?
Yes.
Because we'd be using so much borrowing to get this done.
Bingo. I mean, that's been the process we've been following for the last three or four years, which is, as we identify things, we may not be able to change the cost of a specific project, but we can affect the debt service that the town is paying per year, which impacts the tax rate. So one of the reasons to keep the tax rate reasonable and not to overwhelm it is to make sure the debt service number doesn't go up, so that we spread these costs out over time.
Do we just jump in?
I got some questions too.
Well, go ahead, Chris.
Who put this packet together? Was it Brian?
Which one?
The one you passed out, Brian passed it out today?
That was a combination of-
Can you, can you explain the last page out here? It says Holland Hill Value Engineering Suggestions.
Sure.
Do you mind doing that? Because I'm reading them, and I don't know-
But one of these are ideas that I asked the architect for, to list a cost reduction ideas.
Okay.
And that's what we call value engineering, okay? And he listed them, in no particular order.
Right.
Okay, and things that we, we could discuss. And we've taken a preliminary look at this list, okay, and identified a neighborhood of a half a million to $600,000 in potential savings.
So the value engineering saves half a million to $600,000?
Right now, yeah.
Right now? And do any of these affect what the ed specs, or any, any-
No, no, that's-
Which goes on? These are all, this is just a half million to $600,000 of?
It's what you use, for example, okay? Instead of concrete, okay, we use asphalt, things of that nature.
Our idea here was not to change the program for this first pass, this was, you know, working within our established parameters, what are our options?
Right. You know, I'm looking at this as a first pass, I appreciate the, you know, effort, everybody coming out here at night and presenting the big boards, and this is one of the things we talked about, having these discussions early on really helps us, so, like you said, Mr. Quinn, there's no sticker shock at the beginning. You know, we're addressing a real number, which frankly, to me, is scary, because we were anticipating and planning for the last couple of years at a $13 million number. So I think having an initial conversation, we throw it all out on the table, we look at, at actually how it's laid out, what's actually going in there, what the square footage is, what the classrooms are, all of that is, it's, it's good that we're actually doing it this way, I think.
Agreed.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just reading, just reading what, the last page. Delete stamped colored concrete. Yeah, you can delete that. That's, that sounds fancy. Stamped colored concrete?
That's at a very limited area, really just for a, really just at this raised kind of walk strip here.
That's a walkway for the kids.
Yeah, it's a, it's a safety feature, both visually and in a textural sense, for just, you know, showing everyone this is the place to cross over, slows vehicles, but but-
So a lot of this stuff on this list, to me, looks like things we can come back at after we get structurally set up, and then, I don't want to use the term fancy, but fancy up some of the stuff, just so we know that we have the bones of the structure in there.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we can, but given where we're starting from, there's not much room to fancy up anything, pretty honestly.
I think that the question is, is I look at this list, item one is reduce the overall scope by 5,000 square feet. How much money does that save?
5,000 square feet, if you're looking at-
$7,002.
$7,002, probably.
So that item saves $7,002. The overall list, we said saves $600,000. Are we adding stuff back in when we reduce it? How do we go from a million to?
Well, it depends on whether or not they accepted all of it.
Yeah, taking the 5,000 square feet out is something that is probably less likely to be accepted.
The committee, the committee did not take all of these.
Okay. The addition is 20,000 square feet. If we take out 5,000, I'm only saving 1.2 million on a 20 million project? That sounds like we got a lot of money going into the renovation. That sounds like, is that correct?
A great deal of money does go into the renovation, as well as into the site work.
All right, the ed spec specified all that in the renovation?
Yes.
When you say site work, Tom, is there significantly more site work here at Holland Hill as opposed to Riverfield?
Absolutely.
Is that why you were pointing out the wetlands?
Yeah, well, the wetland's part of it, but it's the grading in the back, okay?
Because we're pushing out, you're saying the land goes down, we're going to have to build up land?
We're building up the land here so that you can have that safety access drive going down, and also this double-
Safety access is just a requirement from FPD, who, or-
Fire Department.
Fire Department, that's right.
So to get trucks around the back?
To get, cover any eventuality.
This area also doubles as a hardscape play area for the students, since we're effectively taking their blacktop area away here that they have now.
And I'm assuming that you ran through the exercise of possibly moving the addition around to alleviate site work?
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Can you quantify the site work differences between Riverfield and Holland Hill in dollars?
I would say about $2 million plus for Holland Hill, maybe a little over a million.
Somewhere in that neighborhood, I believe.
For, for Riverfield.
Are you currently working, were you on Riverfield?
Yes.
Yes.
If we take a look at the kitchen area, can you, as I look at the blue there, that kitchen looks almost half the size of the APR. Can you fill us in a little bit on what we're doing on the kitchen?
Yes, the kitchen addition, let's stand over here for this. The part that is purely kitchen is really mostly this area. In the same addition, we have electrical service, water service, and some utility space here.
Those look like huge spaces.
Well, this area is where you have your walk-in cooler and freezer unit, and then in this area is where you're going to have the actual, you know, prep areas.
Yeah. How does that size compare to Riverfield?
Riverfield, let's see, I believe it was, Riverfield went, Riverfield went from about 800 to 900 square feet existing, up to about, I want to say 1600 or 1700 square feet. Holland Hill was going from, I believe, about just under 1,000 square feet, up to roughly, that was around 1,800 or so. The percentages came out, it went from, Riverfield's like 186%, and Holland Hill's about 176%, just based on the geometry of the spaces.
That just looks like a huge space there compared to the entire evening.
Bear in mind, this kitchen also, as is in Riverfield, we put a double serving line in.
Yes, there's a double serving line right along here where-
Which was called for in the specs.
There are serving line entrances, and they have a common exit right here.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at the space, and, yeah, I mean, it's looking at, how many classrooms are we adding?
We are adding a total of five, technically, we're adding five classrooms net. We're building more than that, because the way some spaces are getting reconfigured in these areas is taking out an existing classroom to make other program work. Like, for instance, these two kindergartens here, as well as this English as a learned language space, are taking the place of three existing classrooms now. That's what's typically, you want a kindergarten classroom to be a little wider, because you've got more, you know, sitting on the floor kind of program, as opposed to sitting at desks. And here, just because of work, what-
Did we make comparable changes like that when we renovated Riverfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, there were spaces where existing classrooms, there was an existing classroom that was taken away to expand the admin, health, and OTPT area at Riverfield, just so it was all in one central node, which is similar to what we've done here at Holland Hill as well.
The process has been very close to what we did at Riverfield. Obviously, not at all specifically.
Yeah, I think that's why that comparison chart, to show us where the cost difference-
We'll see if we do that.
-we're doing the same work, would be very helpful.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Quinn, what have we done for PCBs yet so far at Holland Hill?
We have not tested, okay, for PCBs at this juncture.
And what year was Holland Hill, you said, was built in '54?
'54.
Riverfield?
'56.
'56, maybe '58?
About '56.
So it's reasonable to assume?
That could very well be.
Okay. And I imagine all those tests are going to be, is that, when do those tests take place?
When we, when we have a plan that we're going to live with, then we'll put the plan out to have the testing done for PCBs.
Okay, and Riverfield was approximately, what, 14-7 before we hit PCBs?
Yeah.
Well, the one, I think there were some PCBs in the main school.
Oh, yeah, the rest, too.
Easily, it was the gym that found out the interior of the wall, when we had to knock down that gym, per federal EPA requirements, we argued long and hard about that. They said we couldn't encapsulate, we couldn't just put it back, we had to get all the PCBs out to do that, we had to knock down the gym, that added $2 million.
That's what, okay.
That's how we went from 14-4 to 16-4.
Yeah, the only option they gave us at that time, to either do it now or in the next 10 years.
Yeah, I remember this discussion. So I looked at that, it's not an ed spec requirement, but a regulatory requirement.
I'm looking at 14-7 for Riverfield, just like you are.
And the comparison in terms of meeting the ed spec.
Right, I'm looking at 14-7 to 20.7.
The caution when you look at this is realize this hasn't gone out to bid yet. So, usually when it goes out to bid, I mean, we've been doing this a long time, it goes on.
Sure.
Right, that's why I'm trying to remind you that we're dealing with a conceptual number here. Not to remind you, because I know you know that, but reminds the audience.
That's why I'm struggling with the exercises getting going on.
Tom was just asking what happened to Riverfield bidding-wise, and when Riverfield went out to bid, the base number came in pretty close to where we had anticipated. Now, part of our strategy with Riverfield is we carried a number of bid alternates, because there were a number of items that- Now, part of our strategy with Riverfield is we carried a number of bid alternates because there were a number of items that, not to borrow a term from earlier fancy, items that strategically were, we could live without these if we had to, items, or items that we knew we didn't have to commit to on the first day of construction. They could be deferred till later in construction if we found holding up the work or incurring extra costs. And I imagine a similar strategy would be employed here as we get into the nitty gritty.
We were able to add back in some added options because the bids did come in lower.
While still returning under budget for the project.
Yeah, the project really added 236,000 below budget.
Matt, is... Just because we've had this issue before, does this number include all the furniture and everything else that we needed to outfit the building?
Yes, it does.
Yes, there's an FFNE allowance in the project budget of that 20.7.
So to the best of our knowledge, this really is an all-in cost.
Yes.
We've been surprised on some projects where that hasn't quite matched up.
I've been there.
Cut you off, Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, FFNE, I thought we did away with it, Riverfield.
No.
We didn't?
No, we attempted to do away with it. And we were going to use existing furniture within the system and get located. So we had to go out and buy some FFNE.
We lost it?
No, I don't think so.
And we purchased the furniture from the owner's contingency dollars that we had included in the budget.
Okay, what's the contingency on this project?
It's about a million dollars.
Yes, about a million.
Could you state that percentage, please, for... I think there's owners and builders' contingency, if you could state those?
There was... Can't see the packet, Tom, I think I missed it.
In a dollars and a percentage.
There was an owner's contingency of 3% being carried and a construction contingency of 5% being carried.
10%.
Wow.
What page is that?
That is on... It's marked as page 3 or 3. I think it's the second to last page in the packet.
I'm used to hearing higher percentages. In fact, I don't think I've seen or heard anything less than at least 10% combined.
Now, we found with Riverfield, given the architect and the drawings, okay, with very little O M, okay? And we were able to hold our contingency to the plan, which was right about the 7% to 8% level. So we didn't not... We cut back that 10% we originally had put in, in Riverfield.
Okay, so I did hear it correct. We did have 10% in the startup.
Yeah, that's right.
But we didn't cut it back at this stage. We didn't cut it back until we had the jobs.
No, not until you go a little further.
Right, so typically we'd have 10% of this, so our 8% is less than what we would normally carry at this stage in the design process.
That's fair statement.
The building committee's reduced it by 500,000 already? What did they take out?
No, we haven't taken anything out of it yet. We just met two days ago or so, and this was just...
So you're still sticking with the 20.7?
20.7 right now until we cut through our total evaluation. What we found out was that we had a half a million dollars, okay, that we have already identified.
But didn't reduce?
Well, we didn't reduce anything yet.
On page four of the packet, it says the Holland Hill room requirements with the square footage. I got two packet questions. Are all of these, are these all in the ed specs here? This is what...
So you're looking at a chart of special education spaces. That is a combination of items included in the ed spec as well as items that came up while we were doing programming discussions with the principal, school faculty, I believe, and... Does anyone else include in that one?
No.
That was just there. So part of what came out of those exercises was that beyond what was included in the ed spec, the specific needs of the population at Holland Hill, there was a strong feeling that they needed greater space to cover their program.
Can you give us a list of those things that are beyond the ed spec, please?
Yes.
Yes. Actually, I believe I have that with me. Items that were... Let's see. So part of what was requested, and there were extra language arts specials.
I will give it to him right...
Yeah, we'll give it to you right soon.
You could, and if you could break out the costs associated with each of those, please.
Okay.
And you do that not just for this sheet, but also across the school, so anything outside the ed spec.
Yeah, we're going to go through the whole budgeting process.
One more. The first page, it said, under enrollment, there's handwritten numbers at the bottom.
Yeah.
Because that... So the top one is, we put a line through it, we use the handwritten ones? Is that what I'm...
Yeah, that... The bottom handwritten was a new estimate I got after these were prepared.
All right, so that's an update?
Yes.
So the top one's no longer valid?
All right, where did... Just where did the update come from?
From the school administration.
MGT?
Yeah. That should be your third page in, I believe.
It's my first page.
Page, it's identified as page four, but yes, it's mine too.
Mr. Bateson, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, you know, just hearing the 4% inflation factor, you know, my instinct tells me to go back to Riverfield and, you know, do the math. And I just... You're right, it's sticker shock. I just... I don't know, this, in my head, this blows all my long-term planning. It just does. I don't, I mean, it just does. I mean, I'm... It's tough to even look at the future and look at, you know, even Mill Hills, Sherman. And I don't like hearing the fact that, me personally, I don't like hearing the fact that push things off. I mean, you know, go down the beach, it's exploding down there. It just is. I don't... It's very troubling.
I might. I think that's why that analysis we were discussing, that breaks out the ed spec, we see what Riverfield, we see what Holland Hills. I think we need to have that in order to have an intelligent discussion in terms of what's driving this.
I'll tell you where I am at, personally or philosophically, I'm issued. I'm still holding to my 504 for the simple fact that if we lose our appetite for these projects, or if the public loses their appetite for these kind of capital improvements in the school system, I have facilities in place that the BOE can use to redistrict. I don't like bringing up that word, but my gut tells me that if we're going to proceed with this, I want to hold on to 504 as long as I can before I give in. So that leads me to you, gentlemen, saying 20.7 can't happen, it's got to come down. You just... That's where I am.
And I think part of the discussion is, if you look at a colored chart, you know, part of it is there are certain classroom space where the kids are sitting. And then there's, you know, larger support space.
Exactly.
The question is, what's the square footage on the support space?
3,300 feet.
And how much are we spending on this support space along with it?
I'm sorry, when you say support space, that's not...
Resource rooms. Resource rooms.
That's the page four I talked about.
I was... Been dealing with this stuff in the past, though. Resource rooms, I always thought was that was one of the most important parts where we're lacking in this district when it comes to facilities.
Absolutely. I agree.
So I'd rather get rid of a walk-in cooler than a whatever... What do we call those rooms? Special...
Resource room, special ed.
Resource room. That is what I thought in being sold these projects for the past decade, is that that's what's lacking. That's where education has changed, and that's where our infrastructure's lacking.
And see, that's where I'm looking for how we solve that at Riverfield and how we solve it here. Is it a function of different space and different add-ons or expanded square footage? Or is it just the cost per square foot that's going up between Riverfield and Holland Hill? And I'm thinking that if the ed spec's the same, then we should roughly solve it the same way. If you go back to the good old days, back when Holland Hill was new and I was going there, you could walk into almost any elementary school in Fairfield, and you knew where the kindergarten room was on first grade, second grade, it was all the same. So no eight-year-old was worried about getting transferred to a new school because he or she would feel totally comfortable walking in. So I'm looking for some consistency between the spec or an explanation on why it's not consistent. I realize it doesn't have to be consistent. I'm just looking for what is consistent and what isn't consistent.
I'll break it down for you.
So I think that would help me understand what's driving these costs. And to Mr. Bateson's point, frankly, I think it's all our points, which is as we look at other projects, what is this doing? What is... Where do we go with this? And especially when you start to look at things like Sherman, where we have FEMA constraints in terms of how many dollars we can spend at one time. If this kind of expansion is going to drive those kind of dollars, that makes, you know, that takes our FEMA constrained Sherman project and stretches that out. I mean, we killed ourselves to do the last renovation of Sherman within the $2 million budget.
With these escalation factors?
$2 million, we wouldn't get anywhere.
Yeah, with these escalation numbers, how do we even touch Sherman?
So...
Mr. Quinn, what's the timeline here? What's your board... Well, the building committee doing in the next month or so?
Next month is coming down with answering obviously your questions, but also answering our own questions in terms of have we overbuilt in any place, okay? If we have, what do we cut it back to? Where can we find additional funding? However, so you all understand, when you start from 20.7 million, okay, we're not going to come down to 13 or 14.
Yes, you can. You can do it, Tom.
No, you can't. Okay. Maybe the next chairman can do it, but not this one. But, you know, so I mean, that's an important consideration, okay?
Mr. Bateson, go ahead.
Yeah, just one last thing. It seems like, I heard what you're saying, Mike, and it... Maybe you're talking about approaching some sort of shared space philosophy or dual purpose space? Is that what you were kind of like alluding to, like these classrooms can serve dual purposes?
I didn't say that. I think, Mr. Quinn, I didn't use the term dual purpose.
No.
All these spaces that you have laid out on this diagram right now are dedicated spaces?
Dedicated spaces.
Dedicated spaces.
Yes.
Now, it sounds like when we did Riverfield, things changed. And rooms became multi-use?
No, they were still dedicated spaces. But by building a 504, when you have 400 kids in the school, okay, they did utilize the spaces differently. Instead of general classrooms, they put them into special ads.
Can you reverse engineer that and apply that philosophy right now?
Well, let me talk to the philosophy of that. If you've got a 504, and you committed to building for 504, because that's the number of students you're going to have, okay, or 90% that are up, okay? You can't really design a school which shares spaces now, because when you get to 500, what do you do with it? Go back to portables?
No, you're right.
I didn't say it has to be gratuitous, Mike.
I think that gets back to the projections in terms of when do we project to be at 504 here, and also from the Board of Ed standpoint, how they're looking at population growth in the schools throughout, and that's got to be one of the discussion points in this.
That's true.
In terms of what we're doing.
Above my pay grade.
Mr. Timniak, any further questions on your board?
So you gave me the timeline for the building committee. Is there a timeline for voting and when the...
I don't have that right now.
Does this go back to the Board of Education at all?
No, if we in any way don't fulfill the ed specs, it has to.
I think that if you look at the structural step, right now, technically, the committee's on their own. They don't have to come back to the boards until they have a proposal. What Mr. Quinn has done and the building committee has done, and we thank you for that, is come back to give us an update in the interim. This is a step that hasn't always been followed. It has occasionally been followed, but not always been followed. And I think we're trying to include this as an earlier update as we go through this more often now. In terms of the Board of Ed, if there's something they can update or get feedback from the Board of Ed to modify the ed specs, they certainly would have to go back to the Board of Ed to do that. That might be out of the building committee's request or look at what is going to be driving this. But to Mr. Bateson's point, it may also be good to give the Board of Ed an update so as the Board of Ed staff is looking at future projects, they have the benefit of what is driving these numbers and can include that in their long-range planning so that gets feedback into the capital plan and the waterfall chart.
Yes, Al, of the numbers.
Right now, basically, what we're trying to do is measure twice and cut once, okay? And that's really what we're trying to do, is get, make sure all the numbers are right.
No, and again, this is early in the process, and I want to thank you for that because a lot of our questions are things you couldn't have gotten to now. So it's not, I don't mean to suggest in any way that our questions are things you should have answered to at this point. But I think it's great that we've been able to have this discussion. I think it's great that we've been able to ask these questions. And I think that it makes it probably easier for you to pull together those numbers now, and will speed up the process overall in terms of helping us all understand what's taking place.
Fantastic.
All right, any further questions on the board? We're going to let them go? Gentlemen, thank you very much for the update.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, on updates, we only have public input.
It's the voting.
Voting.
Got you, okay.
We don't have rules to regulate. We go by Robert Schrader's. So we're not required to have public input, but it has been our customer...
Oh, I'm all for it.
On reports, we don't have public input, so it's just for the board because it's generally early on in the process, we could go on all night.
Okay, and I'm sorry about the etiquette with the board. Do you just chime in? What do we do? You're the chair, what do we do?
Yeah, I prefer you give me a heads up and I'll recognize you.
So raise my hand?
Yeah, kind of.
Just to keep...
It's a little more informal than that, but I don't want to get out of control on things.
I thought this was supposed to be more formal.
It's not as formal as your chairman, you got to get up and come up.
All right, I got you.
But, yes.
So you want me to go like that?
Yeah, something, I just say, yeah, that works. We've kind of done that, it's worked pretty smoothly. If it gets, simply if it gets intentional, I'll try and drive up the formality. But as long as we're comfortable, I'll try and keep it as easy as we can.
All right. Next item up is the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount recommended, may I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
A second? Okay, thank you. Any amendments?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Yes.
I'd like to change the taxable number to $17,496.37, followed by a period.
May I have a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Any further amendments? All right, all in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the item as amended is before us. Any further discussion? All in favor of the item as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Last item to hear, consider and act upon any other business that shall promptly come before this meeting. Any items?
I just want to congratulate everybody who worked hard for the town to set up the Christmas tree lighting last Friday night. It was fantastic. I heard rave reviews from families I know who went there. The weather was perfect. It was that crisp wintry feeling. And the fire department did a great job of Santa Claus, and the town did a great job of all the lighting, so.
No, I agree 100%. I thought it was fabulous. Great turnout. Norman Rockwell would have been proud. I also thought it was great that we recognized, and Parks and Rec recognized, the Department of Public Works and let them light the tree this year because I think they labor long and hard out of sight and don't get the recognition always, and I think it was great that they got that. So, with that it, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Congratulations. You made your first one.